Good evening, everyone. We're going to open the Inlands, Wetlands and Water Course Commission for the town of Trumbull, Connecticut. A special meeting agenda for April 8th, 2025. I'll ask Colleen, our clerk, to do a roll call.
Richard Gerard.
Present.
John Loria.
Here.
Carmine Zepheo.
Present.
Rich Deacon. David Varespi.
Present.
Greg Sternica.
Present.
Bob Frignow.
Here.
Town staff, Tatiana Solovey.
Here.
John Mayer.
Here.
Attorney Cordell.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, so the town of Trumbull Inlands, Wetlands and Water Course Commission is holding this special video conference meeting. And I'm going to ask our attorney to give us the legal aspect of doing it and what it concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are having, this meeting is being conducted by telephone and over the internet remotely as permitted by Connecticut law. Any comments posted online will not be seen by the commission. There will be an opportunity for the public to participate. At that time, you'll be given instructions on how to raise your hand electronically, or if you're only on the phone, to dial star nine. I would ask the chairman to make sure that all roll call votes, all votes are conducted by roll call, and to remind everyone that today's meeting is being recorded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, today's meeting has to do with old business. It's lot four, West Misha Road. It's a resolution to approve settlement of David Aronk versus Trumbull Inlands, Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Appeal of denial of application 24-06. Right?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You may, sir. Go for it.
So at this time, I believe, Mr. Chairman, the commission should entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the settlement proposal. And so I need a motion for that.
Okay. Greg, you want to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the commission proceed to executive session.
For application?
For application. Let me get the number.
Twenty-four dash oh six.
Twenty-four dash oh six.
Okay, who wants to second it? Carmine, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I see everyone but David's hand up.
Johnson's aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. So we will go to executive session.
The commissioners should leave this meeting and then click the other link for the other session. Thank you.
Is this the right meeting?
Yeah. This is the public meeting. I just sent an email a few minutes ago with the executive session link.
All right.
So are we still in the public?
This, you're in the public meeting.
All right, let me go back. Try it.
Aye. You're free?
Just help me out.
Okay, so we've got two. We have Mr. Chin. And Greg. That's one, two, three, that's four. Just waiting for, uh, Carmine right now.
I'm on.
Now Carmine, let's one, two, three, four, five. John, that was it. I'm in, I'm saying, John. So let's see, we've had Tatiana. She's there. Colleen, are you there?
I am.
Okay, so I think, are we good? Let's see, one, two.
John?
I'm here.
Okay.
All right. When you're ready, Mr. Chin.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, what was that?
Mr. Chairman, we're, we're back in public session.
We are back. Okay, I apologize.
State on the record, uh, we voted to get out of executive, set to, um, end executive session. Um, I forgot who made the motion.
I did.
A motion was made by John and seconded, uh, by, um, David, and it was unanimous. So did you want to carry on, uh, Tony Cordone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at this point, um, we are, we are now in the public session of the meeting to consider, um, the settlement of the case. I need to put a few things on the record and, uh, then I need to summarize the settlement. And then we will have an opportunity for those in the public who wish to make public comment to do so. Uh, we'll try to be efficient. First of all, this meeting was, um, announced at our April first meeting. It was also noticed in the Trumbull Times on March 27th and April 3rd. The agenda and the settlement agreement were posted on the town website on April 4th. Um, due to the unique nature of this, uh, project, the, the Bridge House concept and the accompanying, uh, ZBA case, the town attorneys did seek independent, uh, third-party legal review. We retained attorney Kevin Gumper. the town attorneys did seek independent third-party legal review. We retained attorney Kevin Gumper of Holahan, Gumper, and Dowling. Attorney Gumper is a graduate of Yale University and the University of Connecticut School of Law. He's been practicing since 1975. He is a well-regarded land use attorney, and he's argued successfully before the Connecticut Supreme Court. He also has served as chair of the Fairfield Wetlands Commission. Attorney Gumper's review of both the ZBA case and this case was completed, and he advised as follows. While he believes that this commission acted appropriately in its deliberations, he doesn't advise that you accept this settlement for two reasons. First of all, in the Companion Zoning Board of Appeals case, with regard to this property and this project, the court recently found for the applicant that he could construct this house within the new setback, the varied setback. Attorney Gumber believes that this indicates that the court is likely to find for the applicant in the wetlands case as well. And secondly, he understands that the applicant has agreed to modify the plans for this project, and also to make certain conditions which will further protect the wetlands, including a conservation easement and a restrictive covenant. So it is in Attorney Gumber's opinion to the town attorneys that in light of those considerations, that this commission should approve this settlement. We do appreciate Attorney Gumber's review and advice in this regard, and I do share that with the commission and with the public. At this time, I'd like to review briefly a summary of the settlement. All of the details are in the settlement agreement itself. First of all, the plans are, the application is what it is, but there's a modification to the application as follows. One, the width of the house throughout the entire house is reduced by one foot. Within the west deck, they are removing 30 square feet of flooring to create a light well adjacent to the house facade to provide light to vegetation in the middle of the span over the wetlands. The span over the wetlands is increased by one foot to also provide for additional light. There's removing of 144 square feet of impervious footprint and daylighting to the ground. In addition, 144 square feet of heated floor space or floor space is replaced with a porch. Those are the modifications to the application as presented to us before. In addition, there are conditions that are part of the settlement. The application will of course be subject to section one of our general conditions, including the installation of a silt fence and other erosion control measures. Installation of permanent demarcations of the wetlands will also be be done. As previously mentioned, there's a conservation easement and a restrictive covenant on the land records that will impact this lot and also the adjacent lot five. The plaintiff will receive additional comments from staff, will take additional input with regards to the planting plans that were already submitted, and are willing to entertain any other modifications to that. The plaintiff will provide a third-party monitor, which will provide weekly reports to the commission. In addition to these conditions, which were posted on the settlement agreement, there are, after further discussions, four additional conditions which we are going to modify the agreement to include, which the commission may choose to do so. One, there will be no underground utilities to cross the water course. Two, heavy machinery needed to cross the water course may only be used when the water course is not flowing, and must use a designated path to avoid wetland degradation. Three, for exterior maintenance of the home, including power washing, the owner agrees to use best practices to avoid spills of toxic maintenance liquids or materials. And four, the monitor will also confirm that the construction conforms with the approved plan. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my summary of the settlement. The reasons for why this commission may consider approving the settlement. We'd also like to point out that this settlement, if the commission chooses to adopt it, would have to be approved by the court, which is required by Connecticut General Statute 8-8N. At this time, I would ask the chair to open the meeting for public comment if anyone wishes to speak to the settlement.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Mr. Chin, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak?
Yes, if any member of the public would like to make a comment, please click the shares, I'm sorry, raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or press star nine if you're on the phone. And Ms. Epstein would be the first speaker.
All right.
Let me see if I can start my video, since it's nice to see all of you. Okay, I, I'd like to extend my appreciation to the commissioners for their generous community service, and to Tatiana Salovey and Attorney Cordone for their roles and representations of our town in all these proceedings. I deeply regret the outcome in the name of our increasingly scarce natural resources. There were sound environmental reasons for the commissioner's denial of these applications, and the open spaces will be sorely missed by me and members of our community who advocated for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epstein. Ms. Perkins, did you wish to, I'm sorry, by the way, I made an error. Can you give us your address?
Yes, yeah, 76 Old Dyke Road.
Thank you ever so much.
I'm Louise Perkins, 58 Old Dyke Road.
Thank you.
I want to echo Janet's comments, thanking the commission for their efforts in reviewing this, and a lot of time went into it. I want to thank Ms. Salovey and Attorney Cordone for their time as well. The one thing that I would like to add to what Janet said is that I hope for future applications of this sort, that whatever can be done to get expert testimony and expert input to bolster the commission's decision-making in alignment with Connecticut law and case law would be done as early as possible. I feel that you all have put so much effort into this, that to have that backing might well have made a difference in the ultimate outcome of this case. So thank you very much for your efforts on all of this.
Thank you. Mr. Chin, is there anyone else from the public?
There's nobody else at this time, but if anybody would like to make a comment, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or press star nine if you're on the phone.
At this point, Attorney Cordone, can I make a motion to bring this to a vote? Or would you like to do that for me?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I can read a motion, and then the commissioner can say so moved. I will add to this motion the additional conditions. A motion to approve settlement of David Arant versus Trumbull Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission, docket number CV 24-6137595S, appeal of denial of application 2406, with the modification to add the following conditions to paragraph three of the settlement agreement. No underground utilities to cross the water course. Heavy machinery needing to cross the water course may only be used when the water course is not flowing. Must use a designated path to avoid wetland degradation. Exterior maintenance of the home, including power washing. The owner agrees to use best practices to avoid spills of toxic maintenance liquids or materials. And finally, the monitor referred to in stipulation four will confirm that the construction conforms with the approved plan.
Bob, or somebody, can they say so moved for me?
So moved.
Okay, seconded by? Greg, okay. We'll bring it to a vote now, Counselor.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just need to, if there's any further discussion. If none, then the commission can vote to approve based on the reasons set forth in the meeting.
Okay, are we good? Can I bring it to a vote?
Mr. Chairman, is David on?
He is.
I'm here.
Okay, we're trying to bring this, because I know David's got another meeting to go to, so. All right, let's bring it to a vote. Greg, are you yea or nay?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Um, David?
I'm a yes.
John?
Reluctant.
No.
No. Carmine?
No.
I'm a yes. So it passes four yays to two nays, it's, uh, it passes, sir. Is there anything else that we need to do?
I know, Mr. Chairman, again, this, this.
I need to leave to go to my meeting.
Go ahead, thank you very much, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Restby. Nothing, nothing further, Mr. Chairman, the agreement is subject to court approval at a hearing before the judge of the Superior Court to be scheduled and posted on the court website.
All right, very good. Thank you all, we will see you, some of you on the walk, and otherwise on May 6th.
And I'll see you in June. I said I'll see you in June.
Thank you, John.
John, all I'll tell you is that two years ago, I was on vacation in North Carolina, and I zoomed into this meeting.
Oh, no, no, no.
Richard can have his.
You know, I'm gonna zoom in for the jazz festival, okay?
All right, that's it, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chin, as always. Thank you, Colleen.
You're welcome.
And Tatiana, and John.
Bye now.
Thank you.
Bye.